Good evening. Thank you for waiting. I'd like to call the City of Manassas Council Meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have the roll, please?
Alderman Repella?
Here.
Alderman Nichols?
Here.
Alderman Taylor? Alderman Sevenik?
Here.
Alderman Langdon?
Here.
Alderman Kruger?
Here.
Alderman Tom Grotty?
Here.
Alderman Ted Grotty?
Here.
The first item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing, and it's related to the proposed resolution authorizing public improvements and levying special assessments against benefited property. And it's regarding the ponds of Manassas Phase Two and Three new street construction. Director Radomski, could you share with us the details of the project?
So this project will be finishing the paving work on the ponds of Manassas Phases Two and Three. We did Phase One last year. So this will be installing curb and gutter and new asphalt pavement on Villa Way to the west of Lotus Trail and Cristella Drive between Snowberry Way and Whisper Falls Lane. There will be sidewalk on the south side of both Villa Way and Cristella Drive. The sidewalk is covered by TIF funds, so there will be no assessment for the sidewalk. We're hoping for good bid prices. However, we have seen a slight increase in construction costs, which is why the numbers have gone up slightly since last year. So that's pretty much the project.
So at this point, does anyone from the public wish to speak or have questions? We can gather the questions and have Director Radomski answer them, or if you'd like to, we can probably have you sneak out if there's some questions that are about specific properties as well. If you'd like to speak, if you could step up to the microphone and share your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Charlie Campbell. I live at 819 Arthur Street in Manassas. It's not really a concern or anything. It's just I was wondering if there's a way to go about... I'm sure everyone knows Dave. He sat on the corner of London Street forever. If there's a way to go about maybe getting a statue or a plaque or something to memorialize him here, because a lot of people are missing him.
Sure. We did something for him, when was that, about a year ago, Tom? We did give him a plaque, and we congratulated him for his being kind of a little ray of sunshine on that corner.
Yeah.
But we could definitely look at that. That is Alderman Grotty's district. If you want to contact him and talk about...
Okay.
I'm sorry. We have two Grotties. If you want to give, contact him. His name and address is on the website, and then maybe we can work on something together.
Well, thank you. Thank you for hearing.
Sure. And we're going to move your comments down to the next section when we do the minutes. But does anyone have any comments, though, about this street reconstruction? No? If you do have other questions, Director Radomski would be available, and you can give him a call either in the office or you can grab him after this meeting as well. We'll move on, then, to the public comments and any matter of concern to the city. If there's anyone who has comments or questions, if you would like to step to the microphone, you do have up to five minutes to speak on anything that you'd like to share with the council this evening.
Hello. My name is Gina Hindren. I live on Cristella Drive. I had a few questions on when the street starts getting dug up and everything. Are we going to have good access to our homes coming in the driveway? My husband has a boat, so he's concerned whether he's going to be able to get that in and out. Also, I was wondering when this is going to start, exactly like on Cristella, how long it's going to take to finish, and what our parking options are going to be. And my husband has a question on our property taxes. Will those go up because of the improvements? I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Are there other comments on the street construction? If not, Director Radomski, did you want to kind of go through those?
I can address those if you want.
Sure.
So driveway access, we do attempt to maintain driveway access throughout the project as much as possible. The contractor will be required to give you at least 24 hours' notice if they're going to be doing any excavation within your driveway. Obviously, there will be some concrete pavement in the apron area that will need time to cure. We try and minimize those times as much as possible and make sure that the contractor and our engineering department are working with the residents to make sure that, you know, everything is, you know, organized and not... So you're not sitting there with a car in the driveway and not able to get out. As far as parking, there is parking throughout the remainder of the subdivision if you cannot access the, your own driveway. So, you know, pretty much on any of the other streets, there is street parking available, and you'd be able to use that at least during the daytime hours. Start date is unknown at this time. The contract is being bid out. With the bid opening of May 1st, the contract's preliminarily going to be awarded roughly June 1st. Contractor generally will be able to start about two weeks after that. However, they will have until, I believe it's October 18th, to finish the project. And we do not have strict control over as far as when the contractor is going to start the work in the pond subdivision. There's a couple of other projects also related to this paving work as well that are part of that contract. We will be keeping the residents informed as far as a start date once more information is available. And then as far as property tax, I'd want to discuss that with our finance director.
Since the work is getting done during 2019, there would be no change in the valuation of any sort for the January 1, 2019 valuation. So your tax bill for December 2019 will not be impacted by any special assessment improvement. With this being a new curb and gutter project, it likely will add some valuation to the property, so there could be some small increase in valuation on there. That's something I can double-check with our assessor, and we can give you a phone call back. So if Debbie's got the name and address for the record, we can, I can forward that information on to our assessor, and we can follow up with you on the answer to that, just about, you know, what amount, dollar amount change there could be on it. But it would not impact the December 2019 tax bill. It wouldn't impact it until December 2020, because the improvement was not in place as of January 1, 2019.
Director Jacobs, did you want to talk about the special assessments themselves and the payment plans and how those work?
Correct. The special assessments here in the City of Manassas typically are done over a 10-year period. The first five years is typically not placed onto the tax bill. Usually, the sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth, and 10th years are placed onto the tax bill along with interest. But the homeowners do have the opportunity to pay off the... Once the special assessment calculation has been finalized and approved by the council, any homeowner could make the payment in advance before it would appear on a tax bill in a couple of years down the road.
So five years interest-free, and then the next five years, if you wanted to, you could pay it off over 10 years. Did that answer all of your questions, then, or did we miss any?
One... There is an area at the end of Cristella Drive, Whisper Falls Lane, which is really kind of nonexistent. But it's a, it's a, like a parking area, an empty lot, basically. Would we be allowed to park in there?
And that is a city-owned lot, but we were likely going to remove most of that and restore that back to grass as part of the community way road project that's also going on.
Okay.
I mean, if it still exists, yes.
Okay. You don't know when that's changing?
I believe that that work is getting going relatively quickly here. That one, the contract was let out earlier, so that one, the contract is on board, and they're ready to start once the ground dries out. So my guess is that the asphalt parking lot will probably be removed before this one starts. Would be my gut feeling. There's no guarantee on that, but that's my gut feeling.
Okay. Thank you.
Is anyone else wish to speak this evening? Mrs. Taylor, I can see you.
Hi. Sandra DeBill Taylor, 545 Broad Street. I'll try not to keep, go over my five minutes and make national news like Brad Pitt did for getting cut off for talking too long at a county board meeting. A couple of things I wanted to address was, first of all, I noticed that we have our CGI partnership video on the website front and foremost. It's a welcome video clip. It doesn't have one still picture or one clip of the City of Manassas. It's all stock video and the mayor. And I was wondering if the council reviewed that or approved that before it went on, but pull up your website and check it out. That was part of the reason I was against that agreement. It's basically an advertisement for the firm. Secondly, I wanted to ask if... We have the minutes of the Plan Commission in here. They are looking to put out for bid the parking lot for the Jefferson Park if we have any formal agreement in place with the school district. There was talk that we were going to have an agreement. So, so they would chip in. I think, just like we have the agreement with the police department and the liaison officer, we should have a formal agreement with the school district, because the school district does encompass Fox Crossing. The entire bill should not be paid by City of Manassas taxpayers, and I think it should be something in writing. Furthermore, because that is considered a public parking lot, mandatorily, it should be going through the Plan Commission for review and not just the Director of Public Works and the Plan, or the Park Board deciding what it's going to look like, what kind of lighting it's going to have, et cetera, ingress, egress. I do recommend that someone on the council direct the parking rec... If they don't do it on their own, then it should go through the Plan Commission. Another thing, we have the bridge amenities listed here, a memorandum of a meeting. That meeting was never posted. I know there was talk at the prior council meeting about getting a committee together. I don't know if these people were voted on or if they were just handpicked or what happened, but it always seems to be the same individuals. And the alderman on the north side is not included, my alderman. And I think it would have been nice to have him part of the conversation. And with that, too, you have, it mentions a $500,000 budget for these amenities. I would still like to see in writing from the DOT that they will not pay for them, because I was looking at information today, and it's vague through the DOT. But I would really like to have a letter that they are not paying for them, and I want to know how we're going to pay for them. We can't throw it in a TIF, not that I'm aware of, at least. And when is this going to hit the budget? And if it's for this budget, it would require, I'm guessing, a two-thirds vote, because we've already passed the budget for this year. And last but not least, the sale of 140 Main Street or the offer, I'm really at a disadvantage, because all the talk has been in closed session. So I have absolutely no idea where the council's at with this. But this is the letter of intent to offer a dollar for the old city hall. I'm, again, not in favor of it. I really hate these offers to purchase that are so vague. It's anything from retail to a restaurant to office supplies. And what really makes me nervous is that it's like a work-live unit. And I'm like, okay, is this going to turn into a boarding house? It doesn't really, it's so vague, and it... And if you're going to put a restaurant in there, the $500,000 that they're proposing they'll stick into it wouldn't even come close to putting in a professional kitchen. I think we're tying our hands up. And furthermore, I don't know how much communication the mayor has input into this discussion, but I would think he would actually have a conflict of interest, considering his business, he owns a building across the street. Any increase in value in that property will only increase the value in his own property. I don't think he should be part of the discussion, and I don't think he should be included in any vote. So, thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else this evening?
Do I speak now or do I wait till...
You would have five minutes now to speak?
That would be fine. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Hello. My name is Chris Colkeley, and I'm the owner of the former Graphics Packaging Building. I first want to thank some of the council members who took the time to come and tour my facility. I appreciate that very much, and I think by doing it, you make a more informed decision, and I just appreciate that very much that you took the time to do that, for those that did. Hopefully, it was somewhat enlightening to you. You know, there's been kind of things brought out about, you know, being worried about certain things, and I think, I think you can see that what I'm doing in that building is, it's a good thing. I've invested between lighting and heating and forklifts and computers and T-1 lines and phone systems and everything else. I probably invested the better part of $500,000 into the building. And I've got Bemis as a tenant in the building, and they probably have, you know, 50 to 60%, 70% of the building right now. They've orally, I've got an oral agreement with them that, on a handshake, that they're taking the entire building. And they want the entire building, and they're going to use the entire building for that to, and for that to work. They want to start off right now. And it will go up and down like an accordion, but they need tremendous flexibility. So sometimes they'll have 10 trailers in my lot. Sometimes they'll have 30 trailers in my lot. But they need tremendous flexibility, and that's what third-party public warehousing is all about. If I don't have that flexibility for them, I will lose them as a tenant. And so I need my parking lot to have that flexibility. So sometimes there might be 10 trailers there. Sometimes there might be 50 trailers there. But I need that flexibility to service Bemis. And without that flexibility, I can't service Bemis, and I will lose them. And I need that for third-party warehousing, period. Even if Bemis would leave, the next tenant that would come along, I still need that degree of flexibility to make that building work. And if you take that away and, and say you can only have five spots or 10 spots or whatever it is, basically, I'm out of business. And I think that would be, I know it would be bad for me, but it would, I think it would also be bad for the City of Manassas. And nobody needs a vacant parking lot, and nobody needs an empty building. And I've done everything I can to make this thing work, and I've worked my tail off on it. And as people saw, it's going in the right direction. All the people that I'm hiring are all local people, and we're going to hire a lot more people. And as Bemis grows, we're going to hire a lot more, and they're all local hirees. In fact, right now, I have three Graphics Packaging employees working for me. So, and these are nice jobs. They're good-paying jobs. They have time and a half, Christmas bonuses, vacation pay, 401K, health insurance. They're good jobs. And so, at the end of the day, if you rezone it, you're going to put me out of business, and I think it would be a bad thing for me, and it would be a very bad thing for the City of Manassas. A vacant, empty warehouse is just no good. And that warehouse is a beautiful warehouse that's food-grade, and I put a lot of money into it. And if, if, if I can't park a ton of trailers there, Bemis will eventually leave, and they'll just, you know, they can go to another warehouse 10 miles out. It doesn't matter. Then they're out, then they're out of Manassas. And then, and then the city is left with an empty building. So that wouldn't be good for anyone. So, so I'm asking that you do the right thing, not just for me, but for the City of Manassas, and you vote to turn down the rezoning, because if it gets rezoned, you're basically putting me out of business. If anyone has any questions for me, I'm more than willing to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Colkeley.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? I did just want to clarify about the CGI videos. They will be in town to film our videos, June 10th, I believe. So that's why there's no local shots on that yet, except for me. They're in town, I believe, in the next week or two to film the school district portion of it. So those videos will be up later this summer, maybe early fall. So moving on, we'll go to the Report of Department Head Staff Consultants. We have the Minutes and Communications this evening. Do we have a motion, Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move that the council accept and receive the Minutes, A through I, and Communications, J through P.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Do you have discussions?
Yes, I do.
Sure.
Give everybody an opportunity to go. This bridge work group, have, have you met already?
We have not met.
That's, I didn't think you did, so I just wanted to clarify that.
I just wanted to clarify that that's who we asked to put on at that, at the last meeting, and I did ask Catherine to join that group as well, being an architect, so.
All right. Thank you. And I believe that...
Alderman Taylor?
I too asked to be on that committee, Mayor, that does border onto my district. And I put a call into you on Friday about that. So I would like to be on that committee, too.
This was the committee that was chosen. I don't know if we want the entire council on that committee. I'd prefer to keep it a little bit smaller. Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have, have it in front of me, but were we looking at citizens to be on that at all?
I don't, it's not actually a committee. It's just a working group to discuss what those options are.
But the reason I bring this up is because today I was at a convenience store and bumped into former Public Works employee, Tim Jacobson. And he was hoping that if we were having any citizens, that he would like to volunteer his time also on that committee, which I would think would be a great resource because of his background and knowledge. So if we are putting some citizens on, I just want it to be made aware that he's willing to volunteer his time.
I did also talk with Faith Technologies about working with us on the lighting a little bit as well, so. Alderman Langdon? Whoops. Didn't work. There we go.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess if it's okay, Alderman Nichols is the only person here from the RDA. Oh, Sam. Okay, sorry. My question, then, would be either for Sam or Alderman Nichols. They're both, she's on the RDA. I have a question, guys, about the snow, the budget for the amount for the snow. You got it here that we have bills north of $86,000, and you only budgeted $24,000. We live in Wisconsin. You, you, we cannot predict how much snow we're going to get. In the past 30 years, this has just been unreal that we haven't gotten any snow. But I know Alderman Sevenik, myself, I mean others, when we were kids, man, we'd have, you couldn't even see out of your, your house. So I'm just wondering, is that the normal that you...
It was like 1888, right?
Yeah.
And we were all much shorter at that point, too.
Yeah, we were all much shorter.
I grew.
So I was just wondering, is that the, the, the normal amount that you budget every year?
Director Schrader?
So the, what is noted as budgeted is actually the Lake Parkville's Homeowners Association Board. So they budget that, but the RDA owning lots pays a prorated portion to the common area expenses. So, again, what was budgeted annually for the last, like, five years was $24,000. And I think of the last five years, four years, they were underneath that $24,000. So this came at a, at a great shock to them, and they're certainly looking at ways to improve on their, their budgeting process next year for years to follow. And then they are, I believe, meeting at the end of the month to, to look to actually specially assess their own homeowners association to pay those extra funds.
Okay. Does that, like, so you mentioned that the past five years, they were under $24,000. So is there a fund that, that stays in? And is that, does any of that money carry over?
Yes. So they, they did have a snow reserve, but it was not nearly amount to pay for them.
Which still, okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. The consent agenda has five items on it this evening. The Common Council Minutes from April 1st, the Administration Committee Authorization to Continue the School Resource Officer Program, the Board of Public Works Recommendations from April 1st, the Street Use Application for the Memorial Day Parade, the Racine Street Bridge Amenities, and the Personnel Committee Recommendation for the Pay Rate for the Deputy Police Chief when officially appointed. Does anyone wish to have items separated? Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to separate all the items under the Board of Public Works and the Personnel Committee.
Does anyone else wish to have others separated? Do we have a motion for Items 1 and 2 at this point? Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move for the approval of the Common Council Minutes of 4/1 of 2019 and the recommendation from the Administration Committee.
Is there a second? I have a motion, a second. Could we have a roll call vote, please? I'm moving too fast for Debbie.
Motion carries on roll call 8-0.
Item 3 is the Street Use Application for Memorial Day Parade. Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve the Street Use Application for Memorial Day Parade, Monday, May 27th, 2019, 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., Twin Cities Veterans Association.
You can pick who has the second. So we have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? See, seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Item 3 is the Racine Street Bridge Amenities. Alderman Kruger? Whoops, I'm sorry. I put Grotty on.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 4, the Racine, make a motion to approve the Racine Street Bridge Amenities. A, 32 SS concrete parapet crash barrier to be installed with the Racine Street Bridge project. B, vertical bars with arch and circles on top of the exterior pedestrian railing. C, include 10 bridge lighted, lighting pedestals. And D, $500,000 for bridge amenities.
Is there a second? So motion, a second. Is there discussion? Discussion, John? I don't know that you can discuss. What did you want to say, John?
I just want to make mention that the $500,000, this is not budgeted for 2019. This would be incorporated into a future-year budget, and if the bridge is being built in 2022, that would be the year that we would place this amount in there with a funding source for the $500,000 or whatever the dollar amount is that's determined with all the amenities by the work group.
Alderman Sevenek?
This was a question that, I was going to say Alderman Taylor. This is Taylor brought up. And also, too, this would be part of our CIP budget, so just so that she's aware of that, too. Thanks.
Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please? Whoops, we put it in the wrong spot. So we're going to start over here with the vote. You just voted on the Memorial Day Parade. Here, I thought I was being nice and not having you do a second roll call vote. So this is the vote on the Racine Street Bridge amenities. We had you voting in the wrong spot a moment ago.
Motion carried on, roll call eight zero.
Action items is the next, oops, sorry, Personnel Committee. Item number five, do we have a motion? Alderman Grady?
Yes, I'll make a motion for the pay rate of deputy police chief is placed at the $91,510, positioned at step 20 of the pay grid when officially appointed.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Alderman Taylor?
So motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please? A few, a few down yet, huh?
Yep.
Getting closer.
Motion carried on, roll call eight zero.
Item I is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll for April 4th through 11th. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the approval of the accounts payable and payroll for the term of April 4th through April 11th, 2019, in the amount of $1,416,629.95.
There's a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call eight zero.
Item two is the beverage operators license applications for 2017 through 19. If we could start with those recommended for approval. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the approval of the beverage operators license applications for the 2017 through 2019 licensing period, as listed under approved in the deputy clerk's memo dated April 9th, 2019.
There's a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please? Tom, yours didn't register for some reason. He did. I just saw him hit it again, and it still didn't work, so. There we go, perfect.
Motion carried on, roll call eight zero.
There is one license recommended to be denied. I don't believe Mr. Young is here this evening. So seeing that he's not here, is there a motion? He's not here. So the attorney would like to make a comment before we have a motion. I'm not sure if your mic is going to work. It looks like your mic is.
And what I'm wondering is, what are all of the violations? Are they in here? I don't see them in here.
March of 2014, entry into a locked building. February of 14, underage drinking. August of 15th, inattentive driving. December of 14, underage drinking. October of 16, fair to be sign, signaler, and officer, as well as non-registration of vehicle. March of 18, operating while suspended. March of 18, speeding. February of 18, operating without insurance. And June of 18, operating after suspension or revocation.
To clarify, those are all convictions, is that correct?
That is my understanding correct.
And those come from a background check that was run by the police department, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
If there's no other questions, do we have a motion at this time? Alderman Nichols?
Motion to deny the operator's license for Joseph Young.
There's a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please? Okay, hold on. There was a motion to deny. Joseph Young. If we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call eight zero.
Item three is a Class B beer liquor license for Mario Nunez. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the Class B beer liquor license for Mario Nunez doing business as Crazy Donkey Burrito Grill at 14 Taco Street for the licensing year of 2018 to 2019?
Is a motion in a second by Alderman Taylor? Is there any discussion? Alderman Sevenek? Whoops.
So basically, this is a short term, and then they'll have to come in and re-register in June.
If we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call eight zero.
Item four is an outdoor alcohol beverage permit for Taco Tap. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the outdoor alcohol beverage permit for the 2018 through 19 licensing year application for Taco Tap LLC doing business as Taco Tap at 10 Taco Street, Manassia.
There's a motion in a second. Discussion? Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. For everybody out there that enjoys going out and having a cocktail or beer, I drove by today, and people talk about how beat up or whatever that east or the west part of town there with the R&amp;R bar. But I just wanted to comment that our IT person, Patrick James, is, you're the co-owner, Patrick? He's the co-owner with another partner. And I drove by it, and I had to take a second look, and Patrick, it is just unbelievable that he has turned that area into a crappy-looking area into a very nice area. His place is just unbelievable, and just kudos to you, Patrick, for what you've done and what you've done to that building and the pride that you've took, that Patrick and his partner took in taking a crappy building and making it what it is today. So I encourage everybody out there, if you'd like to go out and enjoy a cocktail, please stop down at Taco Tap at 10 Taco Street. It's on the west side of town. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call eight zero.
Item five is the Second Amendment to the Purchase and Development Agreement with the City of Manassia and Christine Soens, as well as the release of the second installment of escrow funds for asbestos abatement. Do we have a motion? I'm not sure why your button doesn't appear to be working well back here, but you're pressing it twice every time.
For purposes of discussion, I move to approve the Second Amendment to Purchase and Development Agreement among the City of Manassia and Christine A. Soens dated June 5th, 2014, and the release of $20,000 of escrow funds.
Second. There's a motion in a second. Do you have questions? No? Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. Are the taxes up to date?
And Mrs. Soens is here this evening. The taxes were not completely paid when I checked last week. I'm not sure at this point. Did you want to? Do we have unanimous consent to hear from Mrs. Soens?
Sure.
Chris, could you come up to the microphone so everyone could hear you?
I should be able to start making installments soon, and they should be paid by the end of summer completely.
Both 2017 and 18?
Yes.
Was it part of the agreement, the taxes had to be paid in full to receive money per the agreement?
I didn't know anything about that.
Well, the agreement that is included, the only difference between the one that we currently had and this one is the date has changed in item one, and item two has been added. Did you want to speak, Attorney Captain? I'm not sure if your, yours is not working well.
The original purchase and development agreement provided that the asbestos work had to be completed within two years, and the Common Council did allow a two-year extension, and that date has passed as well. So the first date passed, the second date passed. The funds that are in the escrow are funds that were placed in there because of the fact that that asbestos work has not been completed, and we had liens on various properties, and some of those properties have been sold. And the proceeds from those sales then went into the escrow, and we had just under $100,000, I believe it was. And the last time that we, one of the last times that we came before the Common Council, there was a request to release some of those funds for the purpose of the asbestos removal. And the city did agree to release 20,000 of it. And I'd have to ask Director Jacobs what the total amount is that is in there now.
The balance in there presently is $93,845.
Okay, so some of the funds, as I recall, were also a little bit of monies that were left over from the escrow account that could be used to do this asbestos work, but because of the deadlines being blown, staff did not feel comfortable releasing any funds without the approval of the Common Council. So that is what those funds are for, is to ensure that that work does get completed. And that was the only requirement.
And I did speak with the asbestos inspector. Oh, it is. Yeah, it works. So I did speak with the asbestos inspector, and he did state that there was at least $20,000 worth of work and materials that has been completed. So boiler number three was completed.
Four.
Four? Oh, he told me three, but.
It's number four.
One boiler is completed, and he felt that we should continue moving forward, abating asbestos. And if the $7,000 worth of, $6,255 worth of scrap is placed in that account, that will be sufficient funds to pay for the entire asbestos abatement contract that Chris has. So I did speak with him to see, to make sure that he agreed as well that we should continue moving forward with this. And that's what the money was originally placed in there for, was to make sure that asbestos did get abated. Alderman Sevenek?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess you've sort of answered my questions.
I'm sorry for stealing your thunder.
Well, no, it's not that. It's that I wanted to hear from Christine to give us a little update also of your progress, because from time to time, I know at least a couple Aldermen have told me they've gone past to see if there's been progress, and it would appear, of course, we don't see it, but could you give us a little update on your progress of the cleanup?
Can I ask Jonathan to go up here?
Sure, of course. You'll have to speak in the mic, though, because you're being televised.
The asbestos project, the cleanup of the asbestos?
Yes. All of it. All of it pertaining to the last $20,000 that was relinquished.
The asbestos, yeah. Ramon and the guys, they're a crew that's, they've been coming in and doing it on the weekends. They come in typically on Friday night to do it through Sunday. They have other jobs that are more time-critical, like boilers out of schools and the sorts. And so they're pulling in just a few, three or four people at a time, and they did an excellent job on the first boiler. They're testing them all as they go through, and I'm probably going to try to get at least one of my other guys to have asbestos license so we can walk in and see what's going on. But it's a quiet project, but they did a very good job. The number one is done. If you wanted to walk by and see what it looks like, it's pretty good. We're a little busy right now. We're firing up for a Costco run on the Cranberry side, so it's been down a little bit for retailing for that. But they said slow and steady, they can get it done at a low cost, as opposed to bringing in three people and charging them three times as much. So it's looking pretty decent there. I'm happy with the progress.
Okay, that's good. I'm glad, too, the mayor followed up and reassured us that the work was being done, because that's really what, and it's been said here by both of you three or four times, that's what this fund was set up for. So it's good to see that the progress is continuing, just as long as those funds are used for that purpose. are used for that purpose.
Our hesitant before was that we wanted to use the steel, the steel from the extra to pay for the scrap project, to pay for the asbestos. And steel prices go with fuel prices. So when you see prices go really low, steel is really low. And when it goes up higher, like it's creeping up right now, it's going up there. It's actually a time where we can now bring in the demolition guys to pull out the unnecessary steel that's in there, pull it out, and get money to re-infuse back into it. It's not going to be difficult to do it. It's just stuff to do when you're going to take a loss on the steel. So since we had the time to do that and flip that around, we have one boiler now that can be, the steel can be removed from the outside of it that doesn't have the asbestos on it, and we can get scrap monies out of that, and we can bring in a demolition team to do that. And it'll be profitable for us to refund back into it and just let it feed itself as it goes. So we appreciate the flexibility, but it was trying to make it happen without having to take a huge hit on something. We could just wait it out a little bit and see how prices go. Huh? Prices are up. Prices are up, I know. That's why I'm happy. I say, come on, guys, get the fourth boiler done. Then we can put more people onto it. As long as, if anything can be at net zero on it, it'd be great for us. Yeah, I saw her with Gibson's every once in a while, rooting through the aluminum piles. That's okay. I didn't bring it back.
Thank you, Mayor. This question is for Director Jacobs. I guess I missed it maybe when Mr. Kruger asked, what are they owing back taxes? What's the amount that they owe?
I don't have the number right at my fingertips.
Okay, I'll take your word for it. Okay, 7,000?
About 15,000 a year and half of 2017. Half of last year was paid, none of this year was paid.
Paid yet, okay.
Any further questions?
There it is.
Okay. Alderman Repella?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Are we going to put a date on when we're going to get those taxes paid? I know she mentioned by middle of summer or something, end of summer, but are we going to, is there any official timeframe for that? Or maybe it gets to the end of summer and maybe let's do it October? And then so what?
The taxes would be due, is it August 1st?
The fourth installment would be, if they were paid timely without interest, the final fourth installment would be due on July 31st.
Okay.
But the thing is, the taxes for last year, since they weren't paid, obviously they're incurring interest all the way since February 1st of, over a year ago.
Okay.
Yes.
So are we, is there going to be any type of expectation that she does have them paid by such and such a date? Or what do we do with her? Or what do we do with the company if they're not?
So what happens? Do you want me to?
I mean, interest, obviously, but.
So what happens if you don't pay your taxes is that in October, we send that down to the county. And the county serves as the collection agent for that. They make us whole at the city level and all the other taxing entities. And if after three years you do not pay your taxes, then the county would start foreclosure to get their money back, is how that would work with a business, a house, any property within the city.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Sure. Seeing no further, whoops, sorry, Stan.
Sorry to throw a monkey wrench in this, and I can kind of feel some of the council's hesitation on some of this. We could add an amendment, Randy, or Ted, or Steve, that will relinquish this dollar amount, but that no more additional funds come out of this account until the taxes are paid by July 31st of this year. That way, at least, her 2017 taxes are due. I don't know if you feel comfortable or okay with that, but I would offer that as an amendment.
So we have an amendment on the floor that installment number three would not move forward without payment of the 2000?
This payment can be made, but any future request for those funds cannot be relinquished until the July, until the 2017 taxes are paid by July of 2018, correct? Or 19, sorry.
So you want the 2018 taxes?
18 taxes. No, 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 not the current, the 17. Because she's got the 17 taxes that have to do.
You want both of them paid?
Nope, just the one for now.
Okay, until the 2000?
Because she actually, we can't, she actually has until, she has a grace period anyways on the 2018 ones.
So he wants the 17?
I can repeat it if you'd like. I think it would just make most of us feel more comfortable.
So the amendment is that no future request will be granted until the 2017 taxes are paid.
Right.
Alderman Taylor? Whoops, I'm sorry, Alderman Kruger was first.
Thank you, Mayor. What makes me uneasy about it, and I'm just going to be playing it out simple, is it seems like every year we're going through a dog and pony show with this thing. Every damn year, it's something different. I'm just, I'm getting tired of it. It just never seems to end on this property. It seems like every year, there's something different, something else is going on, and we have to sit there and twist stuff and make exceptions for people. I'm tired of it.
I just realized, we don't have a second on your amendment. Was there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Alderman Taylor?
Question for the attorney. Can we tie this escrow account that is set for asbestos removal? Can we subject that to the taxes?
No. There already is a contract, and it specifies in the contract what the use is of that, of those funds.
So this amendment?
The amendment, it would be fine. It doesn't necessarily make any difference. What it does is just put the current owners on notice, not to bring any other requests for releases from the escrow account unless the 2017 taxes are paid. We would, and we have been bringing the requests to the council just because things haven't been on target. So we wanted to make sure the council was okay with releasing funds. So we would be coming back either way. But what it does is put them on notice then.
Thank you.
Okay, what we're voting on right now is the amendment and the amendment, Alderman Nichols?
Oh, you could have kept going.
The amendment is up. Oh, it's not up there. That no future requests for funds from the escrow will be granted until the 2017 taxes are paid. Do you have a question, Alderman Nichols? Well, until they're paid. If they're not?
I said by July 31st, so that's my amendment.
Until the taxes are paid by July 31st?
Of 2019.
Okay. Alderman Nichols?
More discussion on my part. I'm not, I guess I'm not understanding why we would want to tie the tax payments to the asbestos removal. First point on that is that, as Mayor Merkis pointed out, the county makes us whole on any back taxes. So we're whole on that, and that's an issue for the county. If our goal is to make sure that asbestos is removed from that building, then this money, that's exactly what this money is held for, and our goal is to have the asbestos removed from that building, it's always been the goal, then this money should not be tied to something else because then we're getting in the way of our goal. So I urge you to think twice about that amendment. Thank you.
I don't believe we should be passing the buck. If we send that message out to the community, then we're going to have everybody not paying their taxes. Ah, we don't care, we'll let the county take care of it, and we'll get paid whole. Let me tell you, the county wouldn't be very pleased with that type of feeling. I strongly feel this shows a good faith to the City of Manasha that, yes, we're part of your community, we want to pay our taxes, we want to do what's right, and that this amendment is a way of showing that. And I agree with Alderman Kruger. You know, I understand where he's coming from. We tie it with liquor licenses, we tie it with a lot of other things. Don't even come in unless you've paid your taxes, you know? So in a way, I almost feel like the contract became null and void because they didn't do their due diligence with us. So I think I feel even stronger now about this amendment. So I would ask that my colleagues vote for this and that it makes it stronger, and then they also get their $20,000.
Alderman Taylor?
The goal is to get that asbestos out of there, and the county's not going to help us with that. County will help us with taxes, so let's use the money. What it was, this fund was set up for the asbestos. They're working forward with that, and I appreciate that. And timetables sometimes don't work out for situations, and I appreciate them coming forward, having this effort to get this asbestos removed. And that's what the goal of this escrow account was. So I certainly wanted to use it for that because the county's not going to help us with asbestos removal at the end.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, we're voting on the amendment regarding the taxes at this point, not the entire agreement. So this is just on the amendment. If we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call, six two.
Okay, now we're on the motion as amended, which is to update the contract and approve the next 20,000 draw from the escrow account, and also state that we won't approve another one until those taxes are paid by July 31st. Yes. Any further discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Is, would it, could it be appropriate to separate the question or not?
Separate what?
Approving the 20,000?
20,000 with the?
And then voting separately on the other half.
We just, we just did the amendment, I guess, I would say.
Thank you for helping me think through that. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please? And this is as amended.
Motion carried on roll call, five three.
So Chris, if you could get in touch with John tomorrow, and we'll get the check out to the contractor again, I believe, and just let us know where it needs to go, and if you want to do that tomorrow. Okay? It did pass. Okay, item J is held over business. It's a letter of intent to purchase 140 Main Street. No, we're not. I doubt it, but Director Schrader? Just want to comment on this quick.
Because, you know, there's some concern out there. Wait a second, let me just read something here.
This is the same thing that was on the last agenda. I think if Director Schrader makes?
See, we have no update in our packet. That's my concern, so.
I think if Director Schrader makes?
And if you feel he's going to give us something that if, all right.
Let him make his comment, and if you want to skip forward, and if we want to go into closed session, we can do that, but I don't think we'll need to.
Yeah, so basically, thank you, Mayor. From the last common council meeting, we took the direction of the council, basically going back to them and not necessarily accepting that dollar, dollar purchase. So we did go back to them. We have taken them through the building multiple times since then. They're trying to find, you know, get their, get their costs situated to more firmly understand what that actual cost is going to be. So they're trying to go through, get more better quotes, you know, narrow down their margins, things of that nature. So, but with their letter of intent, it is only good till May 1st. So with where they're at, they have not accepted or denied kind of where the council has come back at. So if no action is taken tonight, this item would technically die with signed eye, as would the letter of intent on May 1st. So we have just advised them that we'll continue to work with you guys, but they would need to resubmit a new letter of intent.
Alderman Sebeneck?
Thank you, Sam, for that update. I guess I'm doing this for the community because, and I don't like going on the social media stuff, but other people call me, and I can't tell you how many people offered me $2 for this building. It's ridiculous. I just want the community to know that we are not selling that piece of property for a dollar, but we can't discuss that any further because we are in negotiations. So just so the community is aware of that, we're not doing that, and we're not selling it for $2 either.
So your recommendation, Director Schrader, is just to let this die, to take no action tonight, and then continue that discussion, correct?
Yes, and to continue to work with them. We do know there's a lot of issues within that building, and that's why we actually moved on to this facility because of the capital improvements that we're starting to stack up in that 10-year period. So that's what they're trying to tackle and get better budget numbers on.
So then we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. The first is ordinance six. Is there a motion this evening? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the approval of O-6-19 and ordinance amending Title 13 by making certain changes to the district parcels 161 Washington Street, 332 Anup Street, and 328 Nicolay Boulevard as introduced by Mayor Merkis and recommended by the Plan Commission.
Is there a second? So motion and a second. So if you had your opportunity to speak at the beginning, if the council wishes to allow you to speak, they could at this point? We have, yes. And that was in, should have been in the packet, I believe. Yes. So this does take a three-quarters vote, which is six people, in order to do that. I believe it's in here, correct, Sam? Okay. Did you want to explain that, Director Schrader?
I certainly can. So in front of us today is a rezoning to rezone three properties, Luigi's Pizza Restaurant, the Elks Lodge, as well as the C. Coakley parking lot at 161 Washington Street. So with C. Coakley's opposition to the, to the actual rezoning per Section 131-143 within our zoning code, it allows for an affected property owner that owns more than 20% of the property being rezoned to file an official protest against that rezoning. So with that protest, it does require three-fourths vote from the common council to actually approve that and move that ordinance forward. So does that answer your question? I cannot comment on that, but it is within our ordinance.
Attorney Captain, do you know if that's a state statute or that's just a city ordinance? She's not sure if it's a state statute, but it is within our ordinance. So it would be effective within the City of Manasha. Are there other questions or discussion? Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. Sam, we had a discussion last week about this.
Sam, we had a discussion last week about this whole thing, and just so I understand this, and maybe so everybody else does, correct me if I'm wrong, is whether or not the property remains as an industrial or commercial, the owner of the property would still have to go through the same process for the grandfathering and to get additional spaces, correct? For his parking of his semi-trailers for logistics.
Yes, so, following the ordinance adoption of, do I have it readily available, of the mobile storage ordinance, I believe it's O-18-02, following that, we have looked at all trailer parking situations as legal nonconforming, provided they've been continued. So, that burden of proof that they've been continued in the last 12 months does fall on that property owner to provide that proof to us that that legal nonconforming use has been continued. So, with that, regardless if it stays I-2 or is rezoned to C-1, staff would still be following up with Mr. Coakley and the ownership group to work with them to see if there is that burden of proof, to allow them to continue that past operation of trailer parking within the back portion of that parking lot, or if they have lost that nonconforming status, at which point, if the rezoning was approved, obviously, could no longer be continued. And if it remained, the use of trailer parking could no longer be continued.
Is there doubt in the staff's mind that the nonconforming use of it would not apply? I mean, we're... Is it the staff's understanding that the lot itself has not been used continuously for that purpose and may not apply, or is this something that...
So...
I can answer that. That question really has no bearing on whether or not you're going to adopt this ordinance or not.
Okay.
It is, if it's a nonconforming use, then, as the director is indicating, the owner of the property would have to demonstrate that.
And that would be either way, whether it's industrial or commercial, as far as...
That's a different ordinance.
Okay.
Correct. It's not the one that, excuse me, it's not the one that's before you this evening.
Right, right. The other ordinance would be dictating the nonconforming part of it.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
And, as I recall, is there also an opportunity for a special use permit?
So, if I can further explain that, so, if there is a legal nonconforming use, so, if Mr. Coakley and our city staff can come to terms that there is a burden of proof to continue to allow them to use that back portion of the lot as legal nonconforming, then any, they can still potentially expand that for future use, and that takes it through the special use permit process. Through that special use permit process, it would go through the Plan Commission, as well as the common council, and would allow additional conditions to be placed on that expansion to alleviate any concerns that the city may have.
And my understanding is, if this remains zoned industrial, even with signed paper stating it would never happen under law, if you came forward for a building permit for storage units or storage containers, it can be done, and it's just a done deal because it is industrial then, correct?
Correct. And that's really what, why city staff has brought this rezoning forward, is to look at the plans, the planning documents, comprehensive plan, downtown vision plan that the common council has already adopted, and to start to make strides to make sure we protect that future value and the general welfare of the public.
Thank you.
We'll let the council speak first, and if they would like to offer unanimous consent, then we can go forward with that.
You had an opportunity earlier.
Alderman Langton?
Thank you, Mayor. So, Sam, if we would vote for this rezoning, Mr. Coakley, all he needs to do is take out a special use permit. Really? That changes my vote then. Okay, thank you.
So, what...
Do you want to explain the process, Mr. Schrader?
So, as, again, a nonconforming use, the burden of proof is on that property owner. So, as we've kind of been trying to work with the ownership group and their representatives throughout this process, we would, again, reach out to them and try to, or look to confirm or deny whether or not there is that burden of proof to continue to allow that operation.
Alderman Repel?
Thank you, Mayor. All right. So, we're deciding between the industrial and commercial use. Industrial use is what we currently have now, correct? And if we vote, and this is, we're trying to vote, if we vote yes, then we would want it to go to commercial. If we vote no, we want to keep it, we would keep it for industrial. Is that correct, Sam? Voting yes would make it commercial. Voting no would keep it as industrial.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Now, I did have the opportunity to tour that plant. Mr. Coakley does a wonderful job, seems to be very straightforward. I did take a gander and look at the tissue mills, and whatever they're called now, Ecstasy or whatever the bill's called, the place is called. Whatever. They've got 40-some trailers parked in a residential area with a fence, and it's in a residential area, 46 trailers, another Alderman I counted, and it's almost consistent, there's over 40 trailers there in a residential area. And this is a industrial area where Mr. Coakley has his operation, and we don't hold the tissue mills or whatever it's called, Estid, Ecstasy, whatever. And we don't hold them to that same agreement because there's 40 trailers there. I also understand the administration here, their unwillingness or whatever, not unwillingness, but just, they're scared if maybe if Mr. Coakley in two, three years, all of a sudden the storage business dries up, and now he's renting that area to parking boats. I don't know, I'm just making that up, sorry. There. I feel that he's a fine, upstanding gentleman, and I think we should just keep it as industrial right now and try to make some provisions in there that he will not have any standing trailers that don't move, that are used as storage and don't move for six months, something like that. But that's the way I feel. And I don't think he would ever do that. He seems to be very concerned about our city. Give him credit. Thank you.
May I clarify?
Sure, go ahead, Sam.
So, with Estid and other users of that trailer parking, as it always has been, even prior to the mobile storage ordinance, that is considered legal nonconforming or grandfathered use. So, it's been continued throughout that process. So, we cannot legally, we could not rezone that property, and even then, make them remove those trailers for Estid. So, I just wanted to confirm that, or explain that, that a nonconforming use is basically a right, so, you cannot take that right away. But the burden of proof for that, that it's always been continued, does fall on the property owner. So, I forget what your other point was, but I did want to clarify on that as well.
Well, I'm still not done. Yeah, I think it looks like crap today. We've got 40-some trailers there parked amongst a bunch of houses, and we're coming down on Mr. Coakley because he's got a bunch of blacktop there that was made for semis moving in and out, and we can't, we're not going to allow him, but we allow the tissue mills, or whatever it's called now, to have 40-some trailers parked where their houses parked, and that's in a residential area, and we seem to be good with that. What's good for one is, should be good for the other. So, I think he should keep it as industrial. Thank you.
And just to clarify your point there, again, that's my second point I wanted to make, is that even in industrial, they have not provided the burden of proof at this time that they have a legal nonconforming use to continue. So, what would happen, even if it remains, is that staff would, at this point, follow through with that requirement, and we would work through that process with the ownership group and their representatives.
Thank you, Mayor. I really didn't want to say anything tonight, but I think it has to, seeing that the floor opened up and there's been discussion. First of all, I want to say welcome, Chris Coakley, to the city of Manasha. Thank you for making an investment in our community. He didn't come here asking to buy a piece of property for a dollar. He didn't come here and ask us for a TIF. He didn't come here with his hands out, asking, "Give us some money so we can make an investment in your community." He did it on his own. He's investing in Manasha. I did my due diligence. I went through the plant. It changed my mind completely, and here's why. Because in the press, it made it sound as though he has just got some type of moving company that puts storage items in there. I've seen the community development department go bend over backwards to help storage units come into the city of Manasha, which I just have been tired of, and we changed our master plan in order to do it. And I'm not saying Sam did that, but our former, a former employee here. As far as the burden of proof, I've lived here my whole life. That plant has been there for as long as I can remember, as a child, and it was used for that purpose. The parking lot was designed for that purpose, and so, our burden of proof here is, did he use it over the last 12 months? Do you know how many, look at across the street here. We got a building sitting there that's been empty for years. We don't touch it because we don't want to be political about it, and then we don't take a position on that. Randy is absolutely correct. This is a property that does not abut a single residential property. And you know what Mr. Coakley did? He took some of the neighbors in the outer areas and wanted to let them know what his plans were, and he wants to be a good neighbor. And I thank you for being a friend of Manasha to do that, to let them know what you're doing. As far as, are we going to tell, Randy's right about the, I'm going to call it the tissue mills, because that's what Manasha knows it as. You know, I counted over 40 vehicles in that parking lot, and no, that was not always there either. I've lived here my whole life. I went to Buttermore School, and that wasn't there when the tissue mills was there. So, that came in later on. We have other industries, great industries, like Intertape, that has trucking that comes and goes and comes and goes. You know, it's so interesting that people who were employed there now don't want to see the semis there. We got the photos the other day. We saw, over a course of time, all the different semis that were in there. This was my concern. I didn't want storage units out there. As long as it was commerce-going, logistics, we have a great company coming in that potentially wants to take the whole building, and I wouldn't doubt, over time, they may want to use it for manufacturing, creating more jobs. And by the way, Chris, thank you for creating jobs in Manasha, too. Good-paying jobs. And by the way, I think he's still looking for even some more tow motor operators. So, I appreciate this. I guess the burden of proof's going to be on you again, but I think it's, you know, we shouldn't zone something because we're afraid it might have some other use in the future. It's already zoned industrial. That's the wrong way of using zoning. And if you have a project, let me know about it, because I know of no commercial project that's going to go on there. And I'm telling you, I am deeply impressed with the facility there. I mean, this is not only just helping the job market here in Manasha, but around the whole Fox Valley, because Bemis is a major company that is doing great things, and this is about logistics. And if you are able to see what's in that plant and the investment he has made, I think all of us in Manasha, again, I will end it by saying, thank you for being a part of Manasha. And, you know, the most important thing that I was always concerned about was to extend our trail. The Gilbert Trail stops. It's ridiculous. We should have looped the downtown, and Mr. Coakley has agreed to work with us on that by having to loop the trail. In fact, he even, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but he even said he'd help make a donation towards it. So, our past tenant wanted nothing to do with it. They said, "No, we're not interested." And now, we have someone that's interested, that wants to be a part of Manasha, wants to improve the parking lot and make it look nicer, and we're trying to play some kind of game here that I'm not really, I don't think we need to be doing. So, Chris, you need to, again, show your burden of proof. I think it's not needed. That's only my opinion. But I would beg my colleagues to vote against this zoning.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council President Stansevich. You've kind of hit the nail on the head here. I come from a manufacturing background, too, and I did have the opportunity to tour the facility, and there's got to be half a million, $1 million worth of inventory sitting in that facility. And the structure of that building, the cleanliness of it, the hard floors, Alderman Taylor, you used to work in there, that's a manufacturing plant, and I can see quite more in the near future. I think Bemis will put converting equipment in there. That will become a very viable-type business for Manasha. Chris stated that he would work with Manasha if he wanted to put a bike trail or do something back there. I think he's willing to do that. I think we, as a community and a city, have to invest in him and what he has done so far for Manasha. We have other opportunities. I appreciate what Sam's going through with what he has to do in his job, but we have the bond to building, we have the brim area here, we've got other things to work on. Let's concentrate on those right now, and let's give Mr. Coakley the opportunity to make this area strong and develop it into a fine manufacturing plant. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, toured the plant. It's a stunning thing, but this is the issue that I'm having with it at the moment, is the way I'm understanding it is that, no matter what, if it stays industrial or commercial, there's a process that has to be gone through for that parking regardless. And if, and if, let me ask you, Sam, where is the burden of proof? Where does that come from? Does that come from statute? Does that come from ordinance? Where does that burden of proof actually come from? If I could ask that.
It's in the ordinance. Well, actually, I guess it comes from the law in general, but because it would be considered a nonconforming use, a nonconforming use, the burden is on the owner of the property to demonstrate the nonconforming use has been in existence for at least 12 months. Because if it stopped, then it would no longer be a nonconforming use, then somebody would have to conform to the ordinance that we have. And of course, ordinance... And of course, ordinances can always be changed, because there are ordinances. But that would be the difference. Somebody, because a use was in, somebody was using a property for a purpose that was permitted prior to the ordinance, and I think it was enacted in 2002. Is that correct? That use then can be continued, but if it stops for a period of twelve months, then you have to conform to the ordinance. You no longer can be non-conforming. So that's kind of where it's at right now. But that, like I said, is a different ordinance. It's not the one that you are considering this evening.
Right, right. As I said, and this is my main issue, is he has to go through the process no matter what, whether it's industrial or whether it's commercial. And if the burden of proof is there, whether it's industrial, whether it's commercial, he's gonna get the parking for the trailers. And if it's commercial, and he wants additional parking for the trailers, he can do the special, he could apply for the special use permit and go through the process there. I believe that the reason why, the main concern, is the storage units. But my question, why is there such a resistance to have him go through the process? I mean, that's my issue. We have ordinances to follow. And what it sounds like right now is that there's some that just don't want to follow the ordinance. Now, do I like the ordinance? I'm not saying I like the ordinance either, but it is the ordinance that there's this process that has to be gone through. And I'm just, I'm just really having a hard time understanding what the issue is, if no matter what it is zoned as, he has to go through the same exact process. And it's not like, if it's industrial, there's less of a burden to proof. And more for a commercial, it's the same exact burden for the same exact zoning. I don't know, man. It's, I'm just, I'm really, I just don't know what the big resistance is, even if it is done over the commercial, and it's still being able to be fully used as it is now and even adding more trailer to it. I don't think that's, I don't think that's what Sam was saying. No. I believe what Sam was saying is-
There's still, I guess there, I wanted to make a short comment here. Well, if you don't want to let me go, then that's fine. I'll let Becky go, and we'll move on.
Thank you, Mayor. I've been part of this since the beginning of the process, when it came to Plan Commission. That was in mid-March, when Plan Commission first considered this and Plan Commission heard from Mr. Cokely. Plan Commission was very concerned about this, how this zoning change might impact Mr. Cokely's business. And so Plan Commission's recommendation was, let's take a step back. Let's allow a week to pass for both parties to get together, and also time for our questions to be answered regarding those issues. And two weeks passed, and Plan Commission received some answers to their questions. And it doesn't appear that city staff and Mr. Cokely were able to yet reach an agreement. Plan Commission recommended the zoning change with the full knowledge and understanding that the zoning change aligns with the city's comprehensive plan, the zoning change aligns with our downtown vision plan that was recently adopted, and that the zoning change still allows for an opportunity for Mr. Cokely to use that property as he wishes by going through and engaging in a process. Plan Commission made that recommendation with full knowledge and understanding of those three things. And we're here today, and I've been thinking about this, and how we can sort of just narrow down to a few points, because sometimes I feel like terms of burden and proof of conforming, non-conforming, legal non-conforming, it's just all in the weeds. And so I came up with three simple questions, some of which have been talked about already this evening. And my first question was, what uses are allowed in industrial zones? And it's been discussed tonight that, yes, storage units are allowed in industrial zones. We know that, we have examples of them around the city. Director Schrader, we know that storage units are allowed in industrial zones. What is the potential of outdoor storage, of RVs and campers and trailers and those sorts of things? Would that be allowed in industrial zones?
At this time, our ordinance does not differentiate between storage, outdoor or indoor. So it basically just looks at wholesale warehousing, storage, and distribution as a permitted use in the I-2.
Thank you for that clarification. Seeing as there's really no differentiation in our ordinance, that raises a question in my mind of possible future uses for that area. And then the second question is, do we want that to happen on that property? And maybe it's not a question of now. Maybe this particular business isn't interested in that sort of storage. But what is in the future interest of the city? And we need to consider that at the same time. What is in the future interest of the city? We know from the comprehensive plan and from the downtown vision plan that we're looking at commercial zoning. And if someone were to take out a building permit tomorrow, or ten years from now, and want to put up storage units, or come for a special use permit for outdoor storage, is there anything that we can do to stop that if it remains zoned industrial?
No.
Absolutely nothing. So again, do we want that to happen to that property on a gateway to our city? That's a question we all have to ask ourselves. Zoning is a tool. It is simply a tool that paints the picture and sets the stage for what we want our community to look like in the future. And let's remember that those ideas that we're talking about didn't come from us, and they didn't come from city staff, they came from our community, our constituents, our residents, the folks we represent, from the process of the community, of the comprehensive plan, and the process of the downtown vision plan. Those ideas came from our community. We know what our community wants to see and what they don't want to see in parts of our city. And then it becomes our job to protect those interests. Director Schrader, my third question, then, was, is there a process through which the property owner can still use the property as necessary for the business to operate?
Again, regardless of the outcome of this meeting, city staff, as well as the ownership group and their representatives, need to continue to have conversations regarding that burden of proof. If there is a legal non-conforming use there, to continue to use that back portion of the property as trailer parking, then that, regardless of the zoning district, we cannot take that away. That is a non-conforming grandfathered use, very similar to the other trailer situations. Just because we would change a zoning district does not mean you can change what the use is currently being used as. So, and then from there, should they want additional trailer parking or something of that nature, there is the special use permit process that they would go through to be reviewed by the Plan Commission, as well as the common council, which could add additional conditions, such as landscaping and others, yes.
So are we to understand, then, that it is possible to protect the city's interest and allow use of the property as necessary for the business if the process is followed?
Yes, and again, as I've stated to Mr. Cokely and their group the entire time, it has not been our intention to be detrimental to this business. We have, obviously, within the packet included an email chain. Throughout that email chain, if you've followed through with that, staff has asked continuously since the start of this process to meet and sit down and discuss that. That has continuously been overlooked, and we have not been able to do that. But we, again, regardless of the outcome, we still will need to do that moving forward.
Thank you, Director Schrader. So yes, there is a way that we can do both. Protect the city's interest and allow use of the property as necessary for the business to operate. And then the question becomes, so why change it? Why change it now is to make sure that we don't see a storage unit or an outdoor storage space in the future, when the property changes hands, or when the property becomes for sale. So we can do both. And that's why it's important to go through with the zoning change and then allow staff to continue to work with Mr. Cokely to make sure that he can use the property as necessary for his business.
Thank you, Mayor. Boy, heated argument tonight, heated discussion today. 1930s, it was used as a woodenware. Lots of wood there. 1950s, American Can semi start parking there. So it's been in use as a storage area with nothing built there for ninety years. Wisconsin Tissue Mills, whatever they're called now. 1990 is when they opened up there across the street, and they bought those four houses to use as a trailer storage area, just a truck ranch. So it's been in use for thirty years, but we don't complain about them. All right? We've got the Bonta Building sitting there vacant. Nothing's happening. Gilbert, took them five years to tear it down. Nothing happening. Mr. Cokely has American Can being utilized. It's earning money, it's putting people to work, it's clean. He's a nice gentleman. If we close, if we do things to not be a good partner with Mr. Cokely, that building will be empty, just like Bonta's. Okay? Who's gonna buy it? Sure, we have control of the parking lot across the street. We can put in a bunch of condos, and that'd be great. But I don't see that happening for many, many years. Many years. We've still got the Brin area. When will that be ever taken care of? When's the grass gonna be planted? Number four. To me, we sit down with Mr. Cokely, have a gentleman's agreement, a side agreement, no outside storage, we keep it as industrial, no outside storage, no campers, no boats. He's a fair man. When he sells it, maybe we make the agreement, when he sells it, if he ever does. It goes to commercial, and so we get control of it. And also, Sam had mentioned that he can use the back portion. I mean, we, maybe it needs to be spray painted. I need to know what he considers the back portion. He's been doing a real good job. Sunday, he had two trailers parked there. Today, I went by, five trailers parked there. Not overabundance, the rest of the place is empty. There's more trailers parked with Stadmeiler's business. Maybe he has fifteen, twenty, twenty-five trailers parked there, but they're in and out, they're shaking and baking. And I don't see a problem with that. He knows, he's already said, when we met, he's not gonna put anything the first couple of rows. And he, hold him to that. Have an agreement with him. Mark it off or whatever you need to. I think he'd be, hopefully, go for that. But I don't think we have to change it from industrial to commercial and take away his caring for the city. So I'm voting no for this. Thank you, Mr. Cokely. Thank you for being a great steward of the city of Manassia. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. So when I, I, too, toured the warehouse last week, and Bemis, I don't know if everybody knows, but Bemis is huge. And they've been around for years and years and years, and they're gonna be around for years and years and years. So I ran into four of Bemis's IT people, and they're there to teach his people the SAP system. And I asked one of the IT guys about taking the whole building, and he kind of laughed. He says, "Yes, we are gonna take the whole building." I said, "Really?" And he goes, "Yes. I'm letting you know, we are gonna be taking the whole building." So if Bemis decides to buy that building, which Mr. Cokely said that he would sell, if manufacturing came in there, why not? If Bemis came in there and bought that building, they could not use it for manufacturing because they could only have two trailers on the lot? Would that be correct, Sam? If the zoning went through, would that, it would stop Bemis from putting in manufacturing in that building, correct?
If there would be a, again, through a discussion and burden of proof that there has been legal non-conforming, at that point, it is legal non-conforming. But that conversation has not happened.
So it's a chance that we would be taking? Correct?
And again, this isn't my personal feelings or trying to push this through personally. These are ordinances that you all, or future, or, excuse me, past aldermen have put in place, and my job is to, one, enforce those ordinances as they have been written, and two, look towards the vision of the city as you all have adopted through the comprehensive plan. And that is what is in front of you today.
So if we, if it goes through to the rezoning, Mr. Cokely could still use the whole parking lot, correct? That wouldn't, this, the zoning would not change that. He can still use, he can still do what he's doing today, tomorrow, if this was, if the zoning was to be passed.
In terms of trailer parking?
Yeah.
That is a conversation that still has yet to be had. And the burden of proof would fall under the ownership group to provide to staff to accept it. Now, per the non-conforming section, it is limited to the current area that it had always been used, which we refer to as the back portion of the lot. You could draw a map, and that's part of what we want to sit down and discuss is, okay, where do we define that to start? And then should you want to expand, here's the special use process that you would have to follow.
And all he would need to do is come in and just fill out the special use permit, correct? And then that lets him use what he's doing now?
A special use permit allows you to expand a legal non-conforming use if it is approved that you have a legal non-conforming use. And that special use permit does have to go through process of Plan Commission, as well as the common council for approval. It's not just a, like a fence permit, you come in and you just obtain if you follow the rules. rules. There is a, a larger process, and it's on a case-by-case basis.
So, that, that plant was shut down, how long was it shut down before Mr. Cokely went in there?
I believe the, the primary mill closed December of 2012. However, there certainly were other users, and that's where we need to sit down and discuss.
There were other users after the plant shut down? There were other users using that building?
We, we could have a very long conversation on this, but again, as Pam has stated, the nonconforming, trying to find the burden of the nonconforming is not what we're doing here today. That conversation is staff and the owners to sit down and, and resolve.
You should be forthright. You've taken a position on that one.
I have, but I, what I'm stating is that...
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to call the question, and I'm sorry, I'm putting my mic on again, but there was something I wrote here that I forgot to bring up. This year, I have received more phone calls about semi trucks than anything, and that's with Alliance. Do we wanna create an Alliance situation? The chief's dealing with this all the time. Here we have a business that has an area where these can stay. Do we want them parked all through the neighborhoods and on, on Garfield and, no, but they can do it. Do you know that? They can do it, unless, of course, we change the parking situation there. So, I wanted to point that out. Boy, here we have a situation where we have a, a facility that's creating jobs that we, we don't have to have problems with all these semis because there's a designated area for them. And, and every, almost every other day, someone is either calling the police department or something about the, kind of the, the growth area with Alliance, and that's a good thing, because those are jobs that are here in Manassia. And from what I understand, they have purchased properties, and the, and the chief has been working with them and doing a great job. And actually, a couple of the people have called me, said they've seen a small improvement, but do we wanna create a situation like that? No. So, please vote against this.
Call the question, Randy.
Thank you, thank you.
Oh, Randy, I'm saying let's vote.
Okay, let's vote. Yes, I'd like to have a...
I'm just gonna, not, not a problem. I, I'll, I'll make this really brief. Okay? The, the statute says basically continuous use. So, if the nonconforming is continuous use, it doesn't say anything that the factory has to be in operation for that parking lot to be continuously used. Okay? So, if Sonoco was parking their semi trucks there, continuously taking advantage of it, that's continuous use, it becomes nonconforming. There's no damn issue in changing it over to cover, over to C, C1, C2, or whatever. It still protects the city when it comes to storage units, and it fully allows the parking for the trailers in it, because it has been continuous use this whole time, whether it was from the graphic packaging, or the, or, or Sonoco who is using that, even if they didn't have permission to use it, they were still using it, and it was used as, as, I don't see what, what the big deal is. We're not here to sit there and take away or close down his business. This is simply to make sure, as Alderman Nichols said, make sure we don't have some storage units or something else there. Doing this, doing that, going through the right process, and showing the burden of proof, which is there, allows him to operate, and in a special use permit application allows him to even park more trailers. I don't see what the issue is here. We are protecting his business and the city at the same time by doing this.
I think back to 1985, when we dedicated the Marina, and it's a big moment in our city, and it was the starting point for our new horizon. And we've stayed true to that. Many people in this room have worked very hard to accomplish that, and we keep moving forward in that direction. I look at that corridor with the removal of St. Pat's School, the former Jensen Clinic across the street. That campus is really looking nice. Still working with that one gas station to get a clean bill of health through the Superfund, and the Clark Station, which is the glass nickel. So, the quarter is really starting to change, and it is our gateway to our community. And we have vision plans. We have comprehensive plans. And just recently, as last meeting, council approved the plan for, to start the CIP budgets for Water Street. None of us want to hurt any business in this city. We want all our businesses to thrive. Throughout Manassia, Nina, Appleton, we have parking lots with trucks throughout our city. If it's Reliance over on Fourth Street, or Central Paper on Fourth Street, Tissue Mills on Taco, Manassia Corp. on Sixth Street, they all have that. But those businesses aren't part of this discussion tonight. Whatever those businesses were started and put in, 1983, there was a big expansion at Wisconsin Tissue Mills, and that parking and that substation was put across the street there. I don't agree with it, but most of you were in high school at that time when that happened. So, we can't put this on this, on this body here. And we can't compare all these other, because they're not comparables. What's happened here is a company that my father started with back in 1950, and at that time, they had 500 employees. When I started there 40-some years ago, there was probably 375 employees, and when we closed, there was 325 employees. Safety was number one. If it was employees, safety, that was just, that was job one before production. And with that parking lot, those concrete piers were put in for pedestrian, where the cars, where the employees parked, to give them a clear walkway to the aisles so they're not walking out behind cars. In my 40-plus years there, never once was there a semi parked in that employee parking area. I was disappointed to see this last couple weeks. Trucks parked almost up to the, to the second row. Does it look good for that corridor? No, it doesn't. Do we wanna a truck depot or a truck terminal there? No, I don't think we do. Would we like this gentleman that owns it now to help us with landscaping? Maybe help us with a trail? Sure. Do we want it to look good? Do we want our, our continuous improvement as that corridor has been going through just in the last few years? I would think so. I don't wanna see, I've heard anywhere from 10 to 50 trucks. Today, I heard 50 is the number now. With a massive manufacturing plant that was there, Garfield Avenue was full on both sides all day long with trucks coming and going. There was very little storage that happened there, very little trucks that parked there. And we always called it the back 40. And it was that last row before Randy Stadmillers building out back there. There's no concrete piers. Those trucks been parking out there for, like again, I've been there 40-some years, and I've never seen a truck go through the employee lot or use that employee lot for what's happening now. I hope manufacturing comes back to that operation there. That's a, it's a beautiful facility, built in 1940. It'll last, it's built, it'll last another 100 years. It's that type of construction. And I would hope that we can bring more jobs back to this area, back to that plant, and maybe, again, starting more manufacturing jobs in that plant. Certainly has the capability for it. Served a lot of people well since 1940. But the thing is, Sam, I can ask you this question. If the zoning sees as it is industrial, can they continue to park trucks up into those, into what was the employee parking lot, and can they park as many trucks in there as they want?
Again, what, what we had looked at is to, meeting with them, to define that area and to work with them to, an attempt to find that burden of proof, to allow that continuation of the back portion. That's, that's been staff's kind of direction this entire time that we, you know, should work with them to try and find that and continue that operation. That's what we've allowed, attempted to do. But again, we've, we have positioned ourselves to state it's the back portion. It's not the employee parking lot. I mean, obviously, a lot of that is striped for vehicle parking. That's a kind of a clear indication of one versus the other. And to also say, you know, there's, there's a lot of support here as there was at, at the Plan Commission. Now, again, I can't guarantee that that special use permit would be approved, but, you know, by the conversation here, it seemed like there would be support for that.
I know other aldermen have looked at the aerial photos, and I think the most we found was there was 12 or 15 trucks parked there at any given time. And that number, I would say, was pretty much common back there. You look, up back there at any given time, there was always a half dozen, dozen parked out there, coming and going. And it's certainly not up into the streetscape, as I just saw this last week here. And it really, again, starts industrializing that, that corridor. I know with, if we all work together on this, we can, it's a win-win for everybody. I tried when I worked there to get the campus on the east side to soften up. Campus on the west side always looked nice. And I think we, we have that ability to do that. And if we go to the C1 district, as, as this ordinance states tonight, they'll still be able to park trucks, as we say, on the back 40?
Again, we would, staff would have to work with them to see if, if we can find that burden of proof to continue to allow them to do that.
Certainly, yeah. There's other options here that I mentioned. On the far south side of that property, it's kinda hidden with the, the glass nickel building there. You don't really see that, so there might be an opportunity and to put another dozen back there, out of sight, out of mind. And of course, they got the, the back 40, as we all called it, to park trucks back there. Kind of a butt to another manufacturing facility back there, Mr. Stadmillers. And I guess what we're all afraid of here is that often we become a terminal, truck terminal, a truck depot, whatever you wanna call it, and start, I don't care if the trucks are empty or full or whatever, but the robust manufacturing facility that we had, and so many products coming in and going out, we didn't have that big storage there. And, and warehousing's a little bit different, but I think it's a win-win for, for all of us to work together to help bring that corridor up to our comprehensive, our vision plans. And again, the other operations that other people mentioned here tonight, what, what makes us different is that in December of 2016, this plant closed, and they tell us what happens with that because of, people are comparing this to Tissue Mills and Central Paper and other plants. But let's go back to what triggered this and what, what happened here of the closing of December of 2016.
Again, so, just because of the mill closed doesn't mean that is the, the date that the operation ended. So, there is still, you know, potentially, there were still leases or still use of that property. And again, that's, that's where we need to sit down with them and, and discuss, discuss that more in detail. You know, just to, to clarify, at this point, what they have provided me to date, I, I have not seen that burden of proof, but again, have, I'm more than happy to try and sit down and, and work through this situation because it has not meant to be detrimental to this business whatsoever.
Right. And I think that's what we all want up here. We're all looking for, towards our vision of our city and of our corridors, and we all know that can't change overnight. We've been at this since our new horizon since around 1984, so it does take a while. But none of us want to see 50, 60, 100 trucks, containers parked out there. We want to see his business prosper. And there's a, there's a balance there between what, what Sam might think or what we might think, and Mr. Cokely, what he might think. And there's a balance there. And also, with the proper landscaping, we can make that beautiful. Our corridor would look even nicer coming in now, especially, like I say, with the four or five other businesses. All the way up to somebody mentioned, Director Lang, or, Parliament Langdon mentioned, all the way up to the Taco Tap, that that, that block might start seeing some improvement. And I would certainly hope so. Now, we got someone starting that's made an improvement on that block. So, this whole corridor is working up, up to a different level. And we certainly don't wanna see, you know, all these, all these trailers parked into the, the vision area of that corridor, and to make it look more industrial. Granted, it doesn't look that good right now. I tried to get that fence changed for many years, and Art Coth and I, we didn't, we weren't able to get that done because we started too late in the long-term plans of that operation. We're, we're being changed without a lot of people knowing about it. So, I think it's important that we have some control on this, and I, I think this ordinance is, is a good thing, and, and we can work forward, move forward with this and continue to control our destiny and not affect Mr. Cokely's business at all. So, again, the burden of proof and looking at the ordinance tonight is, is what we should be focusing on and not on other buildings throughout the city in Macon. And looking forward at our vision plan of what we want this city to look like. Thank you.
Alderman Repello?
Thank you, Mayor. Just 30 seconds. 100 trucks, I don't know if he could get 100 trucks in there if they were matchbox trucks. He could probably get, when I count it, what's the, if he can get 40 trucks in there, it's, it's a good day with, so he can move them in and out. I'm willing to live with 40 trucks. As far as the vision plan, we got vision plans with the water, with Water Street. We got vision plans with Bonta's, vision plans with Gilbert's, vision plans with, with the Bryn. I, I don't know. I don't know when these things will happen. But it's a viable business, and I say we keep the viable business going. But it's a viable business, and I say we keep the viable business going. If we have to make some agreements with Mr. Coakley about outside storage, make them, but keep it industrial. If we have to, is there any reason we just can't eliminate that ordinance that was put into place fifteen years ago and eliminate that ordinance, so then we can't go back and use that as a stone, as a idea? All right, thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Again, it comes down to what we want to be. Do we want seventy-five trucks, fifty trucks? I don't know what the number is, but what I've seen those last couple of weeks out there, it doesn't look good at all. And we're not even using the back forty, as we call it, and putting everything up towards the street. And that doesn't look good for our community whatsoever. And we're not going to hurt his business. We're going to let him operate. We're going to allow him to run a very successful business. But we're going to all work here hand in hand at that, and not just giving somebody, just... And then who's going to go out there and say, oh, that truck was here, you know, six days, the other one was here six months, whatever? You know, we don't want to get into that. I think what it is here, we want to be able to control our destiny, but we also want to make sure we have successful businesses in our community. And that's all this does, and that's why these ordinances are in place. You know, we're not shutting down anybody's facility or limiting that facility with the truck traffic that they have. They got the same problem over here on Appleton Street, between Fourth and Third Street right now, with Reliance, very successful business, okay? They got some groin pains. And Garfield Avenue was always like that, too. Every day when graphic packaging operated, there was trucks there. But we're not trying to limit anybody's, what we're trying to limit is the scope of what we want our corridor to look like. And what I've seen the last couple of weeks does not, does not look good for our corridor at all with those trucks parked up to the front of that lot. It wasn't designed for that either. It was for employees, not for trucks.
Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please? The motion fails four-four. The motion to approve would have had to had six votes to approve this zoning change. So the motion fails four-four. Item two is the final resolution declaring intent to special assess. I can't. Can you turn this off? Are you stuck, too? Okay, there you go.
Thank you very much. I lost my papers here in my pile. I'd like to make a motion to approve R-1019, Final Resolution Declaring Intent to Exercise Special Assessment Powers under Section 66.0703, Wisconsin Statutes, Ponds of Manasha Phase Two and Three, New Street Construction, introduced by Alderman Repella, recommended by the Board of Public Works. Thank you.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Taylor?
Now, this past weekend, I was out in that area, and I also went through some of the subdivisions that are twenty, twenty-five years old already. And I was on the south side of Manitowoc Road, back through the Southfield subdivision, some other streets back there, Purple Sage. And I was over, out in that area, it's Appleton, then there's Manasha. You can tell by our streets with the curb and gutter, and the nice street signs, and when you're in the town, there's Appleton, it's ditches and open culverts and things. But what I think is unique about Appleton is that they put concrete streets in out here. And I was talking to a few people over there, and they feel that that has about a fifty-year life with the residential area there. And I was really shocked to see some of those streets needing, they have potholes, and the blacktop has fallen apart after the tough winter. I noticed that the seal coat is missing in spots from the plows, and boy, it just, all this beauty, all these wonderful homes and yards, and then all of a sudden, the street looks, you know, like, wow, how long has that been there? And it just doesn't fit with those neighborhoods. And I know myself, I've been saying this for many years up here, and I really think we should really look at, and especially what the people are paying the assessment the first time, they have, I don't see anybody with a blacktop driveway out there. They're all concrete, concrete aprons. And I really think for the, and I know it's a little more expensive to put that in, but we don't have to deal with it now that, I don't know what we're going to do with those streets with the seal coat that's peeling off, and it just, even my wife said, boy, that just, it just doesn't look good. So I think with the first, with the first assessment, what the street put in, the people are paying for it, and they think we should really put in concrete, and we could walk away from it for fifty years, instead of going back now after twenty, twenty-five years, and it's not looking good. So somehow, Josh, I think we should have this conversation for the new streets out there at some point, and maybe, look at maybe put concrete in. So just a thought, you don't, it's been a long night, you don't have to comment, but if you want.
We can certainly have that discussion. Again, one of the reasons that we have chosen to go to the asphalt in these residential subdivisions is to lower those assessment costs. Province tariffs, we have about $120 a foot for concrete pavement. Out in the ponds, we're at about $75 a foot for asphalt. So you're talking almost a fifty, sixty percent increase to the cost of the homeowners, which that's a significant cost to a lot of those homeowners.
And with fuel prices going, going, they're going to catch up to concrete here, and that's where we were a few years ago, and, you know, we're almost caught up to the concrete. So we've had people up here that have come with envelopes full of asphalt, seeing, I picked up a hundred and fifty pieces in my driveway from that street, and in the hotter weather, it tracks into their concrete driveways that the asphalt does with the black marks. And I think a lot of people out there want my, paying the difference, but it's something we should look at. Thank you.
Alderman Repella?
Thank you, Mayor. Oh, boy. Yeah, James, I agree with James a hundred percent. The seal coating is horrible. I mean, those guys come with the plows, and there's a whole bunch of scraping, where they scrape the black seal coat down to kind of like, whatever, whitish, they're scraping that down.
Alderman Repella? We're talking about the special assessments, though, tonight. If you don't, if you want to change that, we should just vote this down, and then we'll redo the whole thing with concrete, or...
Okay, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Yeah, but we shouldn't really be talking about that we like or don't like the seal coating.
Understood. So I would think that Josh should be able to put concrete out there, if, I'm sure those people can afford it. And I know I can afford it.
You're one of them.
Yeah. You can do my house next week, I'll be fine with it. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Mayor, we're approving resolution R-1019, and the first on there, A, improvements, concrete curb gutter, foreign asphalt, concrete pavement construction, concrete driveway aprons. And that's why I brought it up at this time, we're just, it's on the agenda here, it's on this resolution, and I was just trying to make a comparison for the future here.
I get that. We just started getting way off base, though.
I didn't, I stayed right with the concrete. Thank you.
I was supporting James.
It's all good.
Okay, good.
Alderman Sobek?
I want to support the two of them also. But when this was proposed, it was proposed for blacktop. And that's why there's a seal coat that goes in first, so there's not damage and that. But what we need to do is we need to change our policy, that when we do new subdivisions, that the concrete go in right away, along with the sidewalks right away, before they even build their home. And that's what's being done in other communities. They're putting the infrastructure in, so when they buy their house, it's already part of their property that they're buying. We're doing this because we're pandering to the developers.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please? Motion carries on roll call eight-zero. We'll move on to item N, public comments on any matter that was listed on the agenda. Did you have a comment? No? Item O is a thank you to outgoing committee members. I just wanted to take a moment. We have a few people that have left committees this year. Jim Leephauser has left our fire commission this year, he's retired. He also served on our police commission for quite a few years as well. Kathy Witjakowski has left the library board. She served for at least eight years, I believe. Emily Steinman left the landmarks commission when she moved off to Florida. Greg Kyle, although he still owns his house here in the city, has left the board review, spending a lot of time in Saksville. Dave Schmidt has left the plan commission after serving for the entire time, I think, I've been mayor. Chris Evenson has left the board of appeals now that he's retired, and Ken Kubiak has also left the board of appeals. So we just want to take a moment to thank all of them for their service. Without people that can serve on boards, it would make the city much more difficult to run. We also appreciate their input and helping us guide that vision as to what the community really sees as important. Alderman Sobek, did you have a comment as well?
I just wanted, if you're done...
You want to make the motion? Go ahead.
Yeah, motion to sign and die.
And there is a motion to adjourn, signed, die. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.